I will open up the public comment. And you raise your hands and I will recognize you. You will be allowed to speak for, each person will be limited three minutes as you can see the crowd. We are outdoors, but I am going to consider this our chamber. And I will ask everybody to follow chamber rules. That's when people are speaking at the time. And being respectful to each other and mindful of that. When you're called upon, I ask you to state your name and your address. Okay. First person would like to make public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Striplin. I live at one nine five five four Sweet Town Road.
Can you repeat that?
Uh, Steve Striplin, I live at one nine five five four Sweet Town Road. And I think that that last line that we just said in the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, exemplifies probably why a lot of us are here. With liberty and justice for all, that there's supposed to be an, uh, an equity in the rules and way things are going. And the way that we've experienced this lockdown stuff has been very inequitable to our communities and our society. And it's affecting some people pretty severely. And, uh, uh, I don't know if it's intentional, but it's certainly not, not equitable. And, uh, I, I'd like to see that become that way. Or I could look at that flag, I could say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I, I would feel a unity and continuity with that, uh, that pledge.
Well, guys, chamber rules, no clapping. It's the chamber rule. We follow very tight decor here. Okay, I thank you, sir. Uh, next person? Yeah, sit forward.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jensen Brown. I have recently moved into forty-four South New Alum Street from West Virginia. So I'm an East Coaster, but as I have seen in my personal town, just the size of this, it's impacted a lot, not across this nation, but across the world. And economically, politically, and ethically, it is unable and unstable that these people are going through. And I've had friends who have committed suicide up in Morgantown, West Virginia. Because of COVID-19. Sorry. But, uh, I've seen a university school and a university town such as Morgantown shut down and go to a ghost town. They've had restaurants, businesses closed that made Morgantown what it is. And with that, I think it's gonna close Claskinai and turn this town into a ghost town. I just moved here, but I would not like to see that happen to this town. This is what, it's the small towns like this that keep America going. They keep the world going round and round, and people need to wake up and realize that. That it is not a fight versus Democrat versus Republican. It is good versus evil versus conscious versus unconscious versus, you know, uh, how do I explain this? Um, common sense without common sense. People have to wake up and realize and actually think for themselves. None of us really think for ourselves. Most of the people in the world and in this country listen to what the TV tells them and doesn't actually think and do their own research. If more people would do that, more people would rise up, more people would have a revolution of what's going on in this country. We are going so downhill and so fast that it is scary. It is super scary, and I feel bad for my little brother and sister, for me, my generation. It is so scary. And I do not want to live in America like this. I want to go back to our founding fathers and back to whenever it was. Whose word can we believe in our elections? Not just who's tearing each other apart, who's doing all these scandals? That is what's wrong with this country in general. A lot of scandals, a lot of evil, and a lot of Satanism. People don't realize that. This is what it is. This is the reality of the situation. Once you are, once everyone in America starts waking up and realizing that that is the problem, that they are not free-thinking for themselves, that they are sheep, that they are slaves and being told what they're, what to do and how to think, then most people will have a revolution and this country will go back to the way it was supposed to be from our founding fathers.
Okay, I thank you for talking. I thank you, I thank you. And I'm sorry for the law.
I'm Dr. John Briggs. Live at seven six eight six two Schroeder Road. I've been a practicing physician here in Claskinai for thirty-six years. I've seen people come, I've seen people go. One of the things that concerns me greater than anything is if you increase CO2 levels in the blood, even one percent, it impairs cognitive function. We have seen people passing out from wearing a mask. We've seen where they mandated bus drivers to wear a mask. Do you want to be on the street when the bus driver passes out? That's stupidity. One of the things that I'm seeing that really, really concerns me is when we think about CO2, it is the component that the blood increases to alkalize the system by making bicarbonate. Bicarbonate levels are the, uh, CO2 levels in the blood. And bicarbonate, it keeps pH below seven point four five. If it goes above seven point four five, we start seeing critical changes. You start dropping calcium into the valves of the heart, into the aorta, and various other areas of the body. And we're forcing and mandating our kids in sports to wear a mask when their body is trying desperately to get rid of that CO2. And we're forcing them to create damage that's going to impact their lives from here on out. How many times you've heard if somebody says, oh, it's an old football injury from high school? How many are going to have aortic aneurysms? How many are going to, increasing CO2, heart rate goes up, blood pressure goes up. I've got enough people up trying to deal with hypertension right now. The worst thing you can do is put a mask on your face and rebreathe your CO2 which your body's desperately trying to get rid of.
Way to go, Briggs.
Okay, next person?
Hi, my name's Julie Stocklack. I live at nine one five five nine Oklahoma Hill Road, Claskinai, Oregon. Um, I have a business here in town, Julie Stocklack Massage Therapy. I, um, just wanted to address the council today that I, I am in support of putting forth a resolution that, um, defies the mandates. Uh, the yo-yo mandate, this way, that way, the other way, we're doing this, no, we're not. Oh, you, you don't need that, you do need that. It's stressing everyone out. It is causing a mental health crisis. Um, also, businesses. If we're not going to support the businesses in this town that we depend on, we're not going to have them. Do you want to drive to Portland for everything? Because you're not going to do it, you're going to move. You're not going to be able to stay here if we don't support our businesses, our friends and neighbors. He's right, we're not going to have town. It's gonna dry up and blow away. We need to do this. We need to support each other.
It's, it's the chamber rules. We do not, boys, we have a whole bunch of decor and we will follow it. And it will, the council was more than willing to meet you in the parking lot, so this will be our chamber.
I think he hadn't heard that rule, so that.
He's behind you.
Mr. Kaiser, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and councilors, thank you. And thank you for recognizing that we had a large crowd this evening, they wanted to be heard and we came outside. I appreciate that, it would be the right thing to do. Robert Kaiser, four sixty Northwest Fifth Street, Claskinai. And I'm a resident of Claskinai, business owner of Claskinai, and I come to you as a commissioner of the Port of Columbia County. I just want to say to the mayor and councilors, with many of these resolutions we've seen, there's a, uh, argument against them to say that it's symbolic, it doesn't have any legal standing, it doesn't mean anything. And I came tonight to counter that argument to say to you, it does mean something, I believe, to, first of all, because the, the ones that came tonight and the business owners and the people in the community, that the council and the mayor have their back. I think it will make them feel more united as a team as we try to get through this crazy time of year. I think, secondly, it sends a message to other cities, counties, and jurisdictions that want to stand up to the governor. I recently signed with Columbia County the letter that we sent to the governor along with, I think, fifteen counties. And then there was the, uh, the Restaurant Association letter that many counties signed as well. And I believe those and your resolution tonight, if you pass it, speak to other communities, other jurisdictions, and make them feel more empowered to stand up and say how they feel. And lastly, I believe it does have an effect, and I think we've seen that today on the governor. I mean, I, I was surprised to see a reversal, and I don't believe that would have come without quite a big show of public support for resolutions like this, if symbolic, if it be. But thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Anyone else? Mr. Tim?
I'm Tim Wolf, um, two one four seven five Ilmari Road. I'm a small business owner, Quimpy Greenhouse. And, um, it doesn't just affect the businesses, it affects the town. I've, as a small business owner, I've participated in the Claskinai Farmer's Market for many years. Um, last year, if you went to the market, it was, the, the attendance was down. Uh, people didn't go out. Um, it affects, it affect that, when the market is successful, it affects all of the businesses that are here in town. And I feel like that this resolution, thank you for picking it up and hearing it, hearing us tonight. I think that that will help, um, our town become vibrant and active again. Thank you.
Because it's a city meeting, so it has to be recorded for their minutes.
If this hasn't been recording, I think Mr. Hudson has the majority of this. Would you be willing to, uh, put that into record?
Okay, I'm Chris Willett. My family owns the plaza where the liquor store, my barber shop, and, uh, insurance agency is. Been in this town for sixteen years. And, uh, I want everybody here to remember, this country was built on a government for the people, of the people, and by the people. That means that we've hired or elected our officials to help us do our bidding because we're all up trying to earn a living. And so when they're not doing what we're asking, by the way, Councilwoman Sampson, I'm really thankful for your bravery for bringing this forth. And that means a lot to me. There's, a lot of people here have felt silenced for a long time, so thank you. Our governor is supposed to be there doing what's in our best interest. I feel that she's drunk with power and is operating as a tyrannical person. Whether she thinks she's doing this in our best interest or whether she has some other agenda that we know not, I don't know. But all I know is that I'm seeing people and their businesses go down. I'm seeing sadness, I'm seeing an overwhelming depression over our, what could be a lovely little city here. And I don't know if you're going to vote on this tonight or not, but I certainly hope you do. If there's any way for the people to try to encourage you to put this to a vote, I'm certainly one who's hoping for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, my name is Sarah Furkins. I live at two one five eight three Ilmari Road. Bob, I apologize for getting sippy. We have a lot of passion here tonight, clearly.
I understand.
We love our town. We're seeing it go under. My little salon is right there across the street. And I'm here tonight to speak for my friend Anna who owns Extopa. She couldn't be here because it's Cinco de Mayo, and they're hoping to bring in revenue to go tonight. They're struggling. They don't know when to have people come into work, what to order, how to order. The yo-yoing is killing them. We are going to lose a restaurant here on town. We're gonna lose more than that if this keeps going on. We cannot keep this up. We have a beautiful town, we love each other, we care about each other. We do. Overall, humans love each other. This town dislikes, likes, we, we generally care for each other. We're not out to spread COVID or be hateful at each other. But this is killing us. We have got to find another way. We need something to happen. Our friends are going under, we're going under. Something has to change. Something, please.
I understand.
Please. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else?
Right here.
Right here.
I just want to ask, wait, first of all, my name is Julie Kano. I live at eight five seven four eight North Route, Road in Birkenfield. This is my city address. Um, I want to thank you for doing your job, thank you very much. And I also want to ask every single one of you, who has read the Oregon Constitution through this COVID thing? Has anybody read it?
Yes.
And entirely?
Yes.
Pretty much.
I have read it.
I worked on it.
And if you read in there, it says, if the government is tyrannical or forcing us to do without what the Pledge of Allegiance stands, it says that we can redo our constitution. We have that right.
Here, here.
As a town.
That's all I need to say.
Sir.
Jared Olson, seven five eight one five, just the way, uh, Red Morgan Range, right here in Claskinai. You all know what this town's already been through? With logging and mills shutting down, Columbia County, everything. The schools, the way they are because there's no money left anymore. And we're gonna do all this? That's all I got to say.
I'm sorry, I did not, I keep looking that way.
Um, my name's Jessica Elliott. I live at three seven six Lucky Sixth Street here in Claskinai. I'm a lifetime resident of the area, and I don't have any facts or numbers or anything useful other than personal testimony. But my family could not afford to go through another shutdown. I have two businesses myself that are Snip Happens Salon and Stitch Happens Embroidery and Screen Printing. And my husband also has a flooring business that is finishing touch flooring. And while I was shut down, I didn't have any work, and I literally had to go do a man's job and help my husband do flooring because he couldn't afford to pay any other workers, so I had to be that other worker. So that was really hard. And I was shut down from March twelfth to May nineteenth. And I just, for the first time this month, paid my bills on time. Because I didn't get any stimulus checks, and I didn't get any unemployment, and I didn't even get a call back from the food stamp office. So I literally will refuse to shut down ever again. So if anybody gets mad about it, that's fine, don't come in to see me, that's fine. I'll be salty. But I also have a sixteen-year-old son at home that if I don't have a job, he becomes homeless too. So that's way more scary for me than being sick. So, I mean, I guess that's really all I have to say.
I understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
May I make one more comment?
John, make it brief.
Okay, I'll make it brief. You know, one thing about this virus, it's ninety-nine percent fully recoverable. And the only reason it's not the virus, it's bacterial pneumonia. Pneumococcal bacteria thrives between pH seven-two and seven-eight. Wearing a mask, you're increasing the pH in your lungs. You're setting yourself up for bacterial pneumonia. Not.
Where we at? All right here.
Quick question. One, I heard yesterday that, uh, Heritage Day has already been canceled. Is that true? And if so, explain that. Two, uh, everybody's getting through you guys, so I wanted to know your guys' response if you have any. Or is there, is there any plan at all? And third, one more. What is the reason for not creating a program to support community and what's that about?
Uh, you know, it's to keep order and, and, uh, the order that's written into our charter and our chambers and we follow. To keep people from becoming boisterous, to keep things organized so we can communicate and stuff. And not, not a control freak, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my God, it's, it's a rule. Is anybody else, because I'd like to address.
Can I add something to that? If you give testimony at the State Capitol on anything, the same rule applies, there's no clapping. It's to keep order and keep it going so everybody gets a chance.
It's not a, not a control, can I speak to the ground? Council have a problem with that, I'd like to address it. I'm Mayor Bob. I, uh, born in Astoria, spent three years, I lived in Clifton, Oregon. I'm a real old timer historian, I'm a real old man at that. I moved to Claskinai at twelve years old. At six years old, Jared, I had commute, my first communion with your uncle Bob. So I am not somebody that they brought in because I'm a genius, okay? I'm a person, I'm a auto mechanic, just like you. I want to serve my community and I want to serve you. I want to hear your voices, I can guarantee you, I know this council, they want to hear your voices. And we almost realize there are many voices with many different opinions on things. Now, there was a letter drafted, uh, but it was brought to me by the Columbia County Commissioner. And what they wanted to do was, before Governor Brown relaxed restrictions, they wanted to tell him about our climate and how our businesses had set up to mitigate COVID with the flexiglass, the distancing, the ventilation, you know? And the feeling that the commissioner, in this letter, was trying to tell Kate Brown that we think that this is good enough, it's working. With the vaccine coming out, you know, we, we think that a lot of people will, you know, build them to get by and to display, we won't have that by it. It was signed by all three commissioners, several of the port commissioners, uh, almost all the mayors, we, we didn't get one signature. So that's Scapu St. Helens, right there, Claskinai, and Bronnion, they all signed it. Uh, Sheriff Pixley signed it, and the, um, District Attorney signed it. Might have had an effect because she went back the other way to work. She has made a statement that she won't go back the other way, and I hope not. I understand the pain. I do not understand the pain of some small businesses is suffering because I've driven around a business for a huge amount of time, I have worked for my job. But I, I do know what lost a job is. I lost my job in nineteen eighty-one, and it was high unemployment, they weren't hiring anyone, anywhere. And, um, so I understand. A man's or a woman's livelihood is extremely important for all of you. And I can guarantee you, it's important to us. Now, going forward, we will probably discuss the resolution or what the council thinks. But I, I, I wish for you to understand that we can make noise, we can, we can send your message to the governor, but it is the governor's executive order. She's the one that makes it, she is the one that has the power to enforce it. I'm reluctant.
We have the power to do what we will do as a community as well. That's the governing, governing ourselves part. Sorry to interrupt.
Part of the Constitution.
That's okay, sir.
We have the resolution that's going to be presented tonight to be voted on, not next month, not Monday.
These issues cannot go unsolved.
This is our town, we will move, Bob, we will have to move. We will have to move, not just us, so many of us.
So I was thinking that that lady keeps her business open, or you keep your business open and the state police shows up there, who's gonna go stand with this lady here? And who's gonna stand with them? If two hundred people are standing there, the state police turns around. If two people stand there, they put cuffs on them and they hold them out.
We don't want that, but we want to live.
I, I understand.
We want our town to stand with everyone. We want our businesses to open, period. I want to be able to go down and order a pizza. If you're afraid of COVID, you order it and you pick it up. I'm tired of waiting, I'm not tired of picking it up, no. It's done, it's done. We're done. No, we're done.
I understand.
We're done.
Okay.
Claskinai's done.
We're done, no.
No, it is, seriously, that's how it needs to go. We need to be able to go down here and order up something, we need to be able to do something freely. It's America. And she is keeping us under a dictator. I'm not doing, we're not going that way. And you guys want to continue that way.
I do not have this.
Yeah, because you're not giving us, spit it out.
Sir, no, sir. I smile because I'm. No, sir. I am listening to you and I'm taking your point. You have to understand, because there are people who disagree with you. And I will tell this group that I took an oath to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and to the charter of Claskinai.
So did Kate Brown. And she freaking every one of them.
And there's things in there that I won't cross, even if you guys ask me to. I hope you understand that.
It's always the other side coming on top here. We're, we're trying to be the backbone and we can't.
What are the legal steps that can be taken by a small community like us to be an inspiration to the rest of Oregon or the rest of the community?
We have to get something accomplished.
I mean, what, what can we do to step up?
You know.
Numbers. We've done that, we've done that, we've done that.
It's like I said, uh, I'm from Greenbrier County. I have seen a whole community change a county from blue to red politically, to stand up to Governor Justice, who is a owner of the Greenbrier. That is what ninety-five percent of our jobs come from in Greenbrier County. He is a personal family friend of ours, of my family. But he has done nothing to help with the pandemic. He has done it in the worst way, completely. But like I said, it's the power of the people, it's the power of the Constitution. This country is turning from a democracy to a socialist, to a communist, to a dictatorship, very, very slowly. And it's not just Claskinai, it starts in these small towns. It really does.
If Ms. Sampson would explain what, what, I mean, maybe that would help us all.
That's exactly what I was thinking, Chris.
Kind of tell us what your proposition is. What is a common sense town? Maybe that will give us some options of where we could go from here collectively.
And explain what, what kind of power that might give to our town, our businesses, et cetera, and what it doesn't give us. Right. Well, I have a.
And they'll give you grace. Yes. Your, your mom.
I'm not sure. Um, I've been following this in the news and coming from this small town, being born and raised here, watching people struggling mentally, financially, businesses struggle. I just, it's just, it doesn't sit well with me because these people are all family to me in this town. So I, uh, heard about the resolution drafted in Baker City, Oregon, where they politely declined to follow the, um, the mandates set down for their businesses by Governor Kate Brown. So I've spoken with the mayor there, she's given me some, some insight as to what it does. It does not protect businesses in our town from being pursued legally by the state of Oregon. We can't do that. I mean, we, we can't guarantee they're not going to come after you.
We're okay with that.
There are things that you can do to protect yourself and protect your businesses from OSHA rulings, you know, requesting that you get a warrant before they enter your business. Just things like that that are available to the businesses. Um, but the mandate itself just backs up the citizens. We hear you, we see you, we see your struggle, we empathize with your struggle. We don't want to see one more empty business in our town. We don't want to see one more family struggling because of a mandate that is not based on science. There's been a lot of, um, number juggling that recently she, uh, the governor was sued federally by the, uh, city of Sandy for fudging some numbers from the Oregon Health Authority. So those are some things that we're concerned. The death rate in Columbia County is at two percent since January of twenty twenty. We've had twenty-six deaths in this entire county. We've had twenty-five hundred deaths as a state, which means we are at point zero five percent of, um, the entire population. So that, any death is too much, but at what cost to everyone else, all of our businesses? It's just about giving people the power to have some kind of control over their business, to open if they want to, to be supported by the people if they want to, to know that the council, if we vote on this and pass this, also supports you and all of you, and that we hear you. Um, we should just stand together. So it, it, it's somewhat symbolic, but it really, what we're. So, it, it may be somewhat symbolic, but it really, what we're hoping to is just to infuse some hope back into this town, to infuse some hope back into the people that live here. Um, there's a huge mental health crisis that's gone on because of this shutdown. Um, we've seen higher rates of child suicide, higher rates of domestic violence, higher rates of drug overdoses. Um, to say that this isn't affecting people mentally is insane, I mean, anxiety, depression, that is one tenet of this. And then just the, the business aspect, just keeping this open. The World Health Organization came out with their own statement in October saying that shutting down businesses was never meant to be the, the be all end all cure to this. It was a preliminary cure, it was to stop it, but we're way past that now. So, they're actually, um, arguing and saying, please stop shutting things down. They're encouraging world leaders, local leaders, um, country, national leaders, don't shut down anymore, it's not working. So, that's pretty, pretty hard evidence to go across when the World Health Organization itself is also saying, hey, this, this isn't what we're supposed to be doing anymore for this. So, um, the city of Cove, Oregon, has already passed this, Fred and Bill passed their own resolutes, resolution. Um, Yamhu and Malala are both going to be bringing forth their own resolutions and Baker City has passed theirs. What they're hoping for is strengthen numbers, stand together, say enough is enough, but even if we can't, like I said, protect you guys from the state coming in and doing something, we can't say, no, you can't do that in our town. It's sending her a message that we're done, we're enough is enough, we're done, this is, this is too much. Let people accept their own personal responsibility, stand up for their own health, protect themselves as they see fit. So, that is the hope behind this resolution. And thank you all for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, how many veterans we've got here that took the oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies, both foreign and domestic? We've got some domestic enemies.
There was one question though that was never answered.
Sure.
Like he asked, he asked you about Heritage Days.
I assume it's on.
I heard, I heard it's off.
That's what I heard, who made that decision?
Yeah, like.
Quincy's having a parade.
You might ask in the chamber, uh, Monica down the bend, uh, I had not heard that the, uh, Heritage Days was off.
I heard Quincy had a hell of a party.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, parade happening this year.
We got, we got stuff going on.
Yep.
So, you're gonna conduct the rest of the council meeting out here? We.
I'd like to address one more thing, the question, the statement was made, I would like for you to.
Guys, we're still in a meeting.
Consider and vote on tonight this resolution and I'd like to ask for a little bit of grace on that personally. I've read through Baker City's, uh, resolution, I've read through their statements about how that basically it is symbolic, that there's no teeth in it. That they can't, uh, override the rules of OSHA to open up their cities, but they wanted to be known loud and clear that they did not agree with Kate Brown's mandates. And I like what Bob said, Commissioner Bob, that there is impact to it because it's a solidarity. Many voices moving together to let their feelings and their, their thoughts and, and ideas be made known to the government. And they said that's another thing that they resolved to do, not just the, uh, the resolution, which doesn't, one size doesn't fit all, that's what I was trying to get at. Is that we may not be able to come to a complete resolution that fits our community tonight, maybe we can, maybe we can't. Uh, but I, I for one will agree to work upon that, work towards that. But the other thing is, is that our voices need to be heard, that we need to make noise to our government, to our elected officials, like I said. Like Bob said, letters today, you said you tried that, we need to keep going.
We've kept going, this entire year, we have kept going.
Email, they don't answer.
Their voicemails are full, we have emailed repeatedly.
That's why we have you guys in.
And let's not forget that Kate Brown's emergency clause was written in the nineteen seventies for climate emergencies. We're talking like a tsunami or an earthquake, it's not for viruses. So, she has overridden that already.
And that's another part of their resolution or, or the things, the steps that they wanted to take, was that they were gonna be in favor and vote towards changing Kate Brown's emergency powers.
And it has to go through her, she has to sign that. She has to sign that. She's never going to sign that.
I, I can just say that as a city councilman from the little town of Plaskanai with no more education than Bob has.
That was a little bit of a burn.
But, common sense, um, that we will work towards that. I mean, that, we desire that, we hear what you're saying, uh, we've got to fight the same battles that you've got to fight and we want to. And we just appreciate your encouragement and your civility and the, the prodding as well to stay on.
And whether you believe it or not, this meeting here is the first step, big step in doing that.
The next step is do what you're gonna do, people. Do what you're gonna do, be your own, do your individual thing. If you want to go to the store without a mask, do it, if you want to keep your business open, do it. Stop laying down. That's all we have to do.
We just gotta start, open up.
That's all that has to happen, she's never gonna sign, okay, do it, it's not gonna happen.
Each other in this small town and we all got each other's back, why not open up?
What they're saying, I've fully seen it with my eyes in Greenbrier County, like I said, Governor Justice put the mask mandate for the whole.
I would like to see your pizza joint flooded, the parking lot full, people coming and going. Maybe you don't, I don't know. Maybe you're happy with them coming and going.
Pretty sure I do.
Because they keep giving them a damn check. You give them a damn check and guess what, they don't want to go to work either. Why work when your government Brown's gonna give you that paycheck? Croc.
Uh, Bob, I, I, I do have one other thing I'd like to say. Um, I've, I've heard that there is, um, some possibility of some, you know, conflict of people, um, in city, in the city government, council, whatever. You, you know, I, I realize you guys have to consider future, you know, income from the state or projects, et cetera. But at the same time, if we lose our town now, if we lose our businesses now, there is no future. So, please don't throw every business in this town under the bus or possible future ransom, whatever, please don't do that.
I got one more thing to say, it's like I said, uh, Greenbrier County Governor Justice, what they did from flipping it from red to blue, or from blue to red, they stopped wearing masks. They did what most of the people in this community that I've seen are wanting to do, fight back. It starts with a small community and what happened during the election, my state was the only state to vote, all fifty-five counties red. And it started in Greenbrier County from flipping it from blue to red, not getting political, but it is a point, it starts with us. It starts with the people and it needs to happen if we're gonna make change for the rest of Oregon and for the rest of this country.
Just talking about it like this and then you guys going back and then sending off something's not gonna go. What, what is it gonna do to her, what is she gonna do to it? What will she do, she'll laugh, she will laugh.
She'll target us.
But you know what, if we all stand up and we all do something by this, opening up, and when they send somebody down here, we all stand there and go, what? You're gonna, what are you gonna do? It's gonna end.
Toby will.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I'm Toby Harris, for those of you that don't know, I'm on city council and I also own Fultanos Pizza here in town and also on Scapu's. Um, I, I somehow feel like, um, some folks feel like we're against doing this and I don't know where that really came from. This just came to us today, we've not even talked about it yet, it's not been a discussion. We, we haven't even talked about the pros and cons of doing this together as a group, it's just today that we've seen this. So, we're not against this and somehow I, I kind of feel like that's the vibe that's going on.
Because we don't know.
No, I know, we don't even know, because we just got it today, I mean, it's just literally today.
What's your feelings on it?
What's that?
How do you feel, like you want to just go at it?
If I can finish real quick, if I could just finish, I, I, I just want to say as a business owner, I really appreciate the support of everyone who's been here. Um, you know, my, my family only eats if you eat. So, I, I just truly appreciate all the support that we have from the community and who care about the community and that to me is just, you know, that means a lot. I mean, that, that's, that's the life of Plaskanai. And I, and the rest of the council all agree. Um, Jim, you know, he, he cares a lot about our community and our schools and our kids. Um, every one of us have a, a role in this community and we're very appreciative of that. Um, we are not against this resolution, we, we just haven't even talked about it yet and I, we're not the enemy, the government's the enemy. We want, we want to move ahead as well. Um, I, I have, I have questions about the resolution, a lot of it is about the legality of it and what it actually does. I like things that work, um, I, I don't mind symbolism, I don't mind sending a message, a strong message of support, I think that's really beneficial. But I also want to know, what does it mean when we send this? What does it mean when we say we're not gonna follow the rules that Kate puts out? Um, am I gonna get a bill for fifty thousand dollars, because that happens?
Nobody has. They're not coming.
They have in Washington, Washington's.
We are in Washington.
You're not doing your job.
Our constitution is different than Washington.
I'm, I'm just saying I have questions, that's all, I, I just want to discuss it, that's all.
Yeah.
But, but, but even more than that, I just, again, just want to thank you for your support for our communities, for our businesses. And, um, and I'm in support of you, I'm in support of you being here, I just don't get the anger, uh, toward, toward the council, we're not the enemy.
We're not angry, we're angry at the situation.
I'm angry at a certain governor.
This is imperative.
That, that, that we're getting pushed under and then people look at us like, you know.
Yeah, I'm angry too, I, our recording, we changed our, our recording on our.
Yeah, and it's splitting families apart and it's ridiculous.
Yeah, we're, we're all angry and we all.
Because it's gotta stop, we gotta just go and over it.
I think one of the things that people, it's at the tipping point right now where people have been pushed by fear to, to submit. At first it was like, these are the facts, don't, don't, don't make your neighbor sick. And everybody got, okay, well, we don't want to make our neighbor sick and then we're like, oh, that's a lie. That, that's not the truth, okay. So, now, then there was this fear thing, like, you know, I go into a store and somebody says, you can't come in here, get a mask on. Or like I go into a restaurant and everybody's sitting down with no masks on and they're all, you better put a mask on. And I said, see ya, I ain't coming back.
We are scared now to get our friends in trouble by not wearing masks, it's our businesses, we're not scared of the virus anymore, a lot of us are not.
Yeah, because the government is saying, coming there with OSHA and saying, we're gonna shut your business down.
Yes.
If, if you don't comply, so, and if they don't comply, then, then fear has made subjects out of every one of us. And, and so, subject to, then to suicide, loss of business, losing homes. How far, how far are feared? I'm not in that position, but I'm willing to stand with those who are, because I realize our liberty is, is, is valuable. It's worth me having a good jail ministry.
They follow the science and they don't? I, 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 I wanna, I want to, yeah, and that's great.
If I sound confrontational, I apologize for public speaking, hate it.
It's hard, isn't it?
And, you know, it is a, an emotionally charged subject for most of us here and, you know, I, I just, I just want to support you guys and, and hope that, that you are supporting us. And I know you're on both sides of that point, so, you know.
So, Toby, if I can add something, you know, you talked about, I'm not gonna break the school, but you did talk about suicide, you talk about anxiety, depression, we see all that. I think the difficulty is this is, when you make decisions on emotion, the problem is, is reality's gonna come and follow that up. It's our job and, and it really doesn't matter, I will tell you one hundred percent, I agree with everything that I've heard and I'm one hundred percent behind. This town needs to open up, one hundred percent, the schools need to open up, games need to open up, everything needs to open up. The problem is, there are still governing laws that are out there.
That she has overridden herself.
Right, and, and, but regardless, right, I'm not arguing that for or against it, I'm just saying that, I had a conversation with Bob today, we discussed it. The first thing he said is, we want to support everybody, there's not a business here that we look at and say, we don't want to support. And we don't want to continue to separate our kids, to separate our sporting events and so on and so forth. But the issue is, why haven't businesses opened up?
Because we need support, I'm gonna open.
Right.
I wish you'd shut me down, because I'll stay open, I'm not afraid. We need to support the shit out of all these businesses.
But I, but I will say this is, there's, there's not a person on the council that doesn't support.
Understood, understood. I think there's a lot of passion here.
Right, we just have a lot of responsibility to be able to say, when we make a decision, we have to live with the decision that is neither financially and emotionally and for a long term, impact a lot of different people. So, there's a lot of decisions to make, exactly. So, behind you, one hundred percent. How do we, how do we do it?
I'm behind you a hundred percent if you stick up for us a hundred percent.
Right, and how do we do it, but how do we do it the right way, right? Let's find a way to do it the right way.
Yeah.
Right, that's the difference, let's find a way to do it the right way. What's that?
Continuing to comply is the right.
Right, and I'm not talking about compliance, what I'm talking about is there's ways to do things that we're going to be able to have greater flexibility at the same time, still support our business owners. So that somebody doesn't come in and say, you know what, OSHA, we're gonna shut you down. You want to talk about impacting a family and regardless of how many people are standing there in that moment.
How many times has OSHA been in the Safeway?
Right, and I don't know.
Tickets for masks, they'll sit in Kim's place all day long waiting to write Bailey a ticket.
Yeah.
To, you know, it's.
Right.
Yeah, our Walmart, our Home Depot, our Lowe's.
Yep.
But they will come down here and go, Robert, you better have a mask on your people. But at Home Depot or Lowe's?
That's the difference, those corporations are gonna die.
To take all your businesses away.
Yeah, we're boosting long use economy, definitely.
But I think ultimately just being able to walk away knowing that.
Pizza Hut or Little Caesar's or something like that, because why would you want a little, you know? I mean, that's, that's what they want, they don't want us to have those.
But, and, and we don't go to Longview to go order pizza, we order it, we order it from Toby. Even if it's a little more expensive and we're working on it. We're working on bringing those prices down a little bit, but.
It was our donation to the.
Yeah, that's fine, but you know what, we do love you, we do care about you and, and we, and we are backing you one hundred percent, let's just find a way to do it the right way.
Jim, can I add one thing? Please. Yep. If you come in our business not wearing a mask, we're to urge you to wear a mask. If you don't want to wear the mask, we're supposed to call the police and have you trespass from our business. In a town of two thousand people and you start trespassing people from our business because they don't comply with an OSHA guideline, we need somebody to.
So, so giving us the opportunity to take a look at all those possible avenues, to be able to say, how can we really help people in the long term and not just in the short term? Because I agree with.